Good evening, I'd like to call tonight's October 13th Unionville Chad's Board School District Work Session to order. Before we begin, I want to make an announcement about an executive session. The board met twice in executive session since our last public meeting. We met tonight and discussed student special education settlements, staff changes, contract, safety update and debrief, and an update on staff leaves. And we also met in exec session on October 2nd for an information-only update on the timeline and process of the middle school project design phase. I want to now move on to community comments and invite anybody from our community who wants to make public comment to come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to school director comments, beginning with Mr. Schartz.
No comments.
No comments.
No comment?
No comments.
Brief comment, just to celebrate the Unionville Community Fair and everyone that contributes to that and brings it back year after year, it's a gem of our community and a lot of people put a lot of work into it. And it was just so nice to see so many people from the district there participating.
No comments.
No comment.
Okay, I have no comment either. Moving on to routine business, routine business will be discussed and voted on at the regular school board meeting, which is this month Tuesday, October 21st. Next up is policy with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Brata. This time I'd like to invite Dr. Ryder to come up to present this month's policy.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Looking at our policies up for approval this month, we have several, but there have not been any changes to any of the policies noted for approval since their first reading in August, and then again their second reading last month. Just as a quick reminder, basically, all of these policies were related to changes in the uniform administrative guidance requirements and really impact sort of our federal awards and grants and the work that happens with Mr. Dadey and his team. So that is all of the items, starting with the 626 numbering, including all of the AGs that historically were attachments, but are now AGs, as well as 827. And I believe, Mr. Allen, you had some things to add on 827?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ryder. We did receive via email some questions regarding the proposed changes to policy 827, which is conflict of interest. So I think, I feel it's instructive to discuss those in public, since oftentimes, one person may ask a question and other people might have similar questions, but not ask those questions for a variety of reasons. Looking at the proposed changes to policy 827, conflict of interest, under the section of standards of conduct, as Dr. Ryder said, these were proposed changes put forth by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, PSBA, due to changes of the federal, of the 2200 CFR. So proposed change was changing "public official" and "public" to "no board member or district employee shall accept an honorarium." This is to, within this section, this is to bring consistency to the nomenclature used throughout the rest of this section of standards of conduct. The only spot where "public official" or "public" was previously, is currently used, is in that one sentence, which is the next to the last paragraph. Everywhere else within this section, references are made to board members and district employees. So this does not change the meaning of this policy. It rather just clarifies it and brings consistency to that section. Likewise, as we go further down into the reporting conflicts of interest section, in the penultimate paragraph, the proposed change is to add "the district shall provide written notification of such protections to district employees." This question was asked was if that meant that only district employees had protection from reprisals, retaliation? And my answer to that would be no. This is simply to emphasize that district employees shall be expressly notified via written notification that they do have protections from reprisals and retaliation, but it does not change those protections for anyone else. And then the final proposed change is the last paragraph under disciplinary actions. That's the addition of "for employees," and the sentence of "violations of this policy may result in disciplinary action for employees up to and including," continue through. This does not, the addition of "for employees" is to clarify, because as you look at the rest of that section, it appears to be clearly written as existing "for employees" because of the mention of applicable collective bargaining agreements. That would not apply to anyone other than district employees. That would not apply to board members, nor would it apply to the board solicitor. And in fact, the district, you know, the district would not have the same process for applying disciplinary actions to board members or solicitors as there would be for district employees. So this is again, to clarify and to, I think, to make the, to bring the existing policy, make it a little bit clearer for everyone. Any questions or comments regarding 827? Dr. Ryder, back to you. Thank you.
Perfect. So these eight policies will be up for board approval next week, and unless anything were to come to light, they will remain as written. Moving on to section 4.2, our policies up for review and approval. There are two this month. These are policies that are being brought forward for the first time tonight, and we are asking for a vote next week. The two policies that are indicated, 126 class size and 322 gifts, are part of sort of our stale date process, which is generally every five years. We want to make sure that the board and the community and the administrative team are reviewing them. Neither one of these policies has any changes being recommended, other than to indicate that they have been reviewed and update the date upon the board's vote next week. Ms. Talbert?
I just had a question about 322. I read it, and it says that no employees may accept gifts. There's no de minimis nature language or other language in there, kind of allowing for what we would customarily see in the hallways at holiday time. I think many gifts are given, a mug, some pens, stationery, like very small, but they are indeed gifts. And so I just, I don't love where we have a policy that we knowingly kind of just look the other way on this. And it was something of the de minimis nature, which was in the prior policy, would stall for that, because there, certainly, our teachers know they can't accept, you know, extravagant gifts, and that's not what's given. But gifts are given, and they're lovely, and they're a token of hard work and effort. So if we know that that's happening, could we put something in here?
We certainly can, if that's what the board would like to do. We can pull this from-
It's pretty black and white, as it's written.
And again, this is no change. This is the current policy that's been effective.
I'm aware.
Just want to make sure that we're clear. It's a rather simple policy, but certainly I hear what you're saying, Ms. Talbert. So if the board would like us, we can either put this at a first reading, or if you have a simple change, like you'd like one sentence added, we can keep it for-
It's such a simple policy, but it is so very black and white, and we do not follow that. So if we expect people to follow that, or we could have some language acknowledging as the last policy did, something without, I think it's a de minimis nature with no economic impact or something.
And I think the language here-
I'll look to my board colleagues and the chair.
I would just give feedback on the end of sort of authority. Number one is the accept that might impair or appear to impair professional judgment. That might be the language. It's certainly not as clear as what you're proposing, Ms. Talbert, but that was being utilized in the past. Pens, I don't know that they would impair professional judgment in the example you had given, or mugs. Certainly, larger gifts might impair judgment, but we can clarify that at whatever level the board feels is appropriate. And if you'd like time to think about this, we certainly can put it in the three-
Yeah, I was putting out the question. I was like, I always read to say, are we putting people kind of in direct conflict? And if someone didn't like it, versus this is, the authority is different. The purpose is, we're discouraging gifts.
It is inequity.
But I don't want to make things harder, but yeah.
Well, I maybe put this out to Dr. Simonson and Mr. Howrong, because I feel like I'd remember in the last 10 years us putting the policy where it is, and a discussion about why it is the way it is. But I don't know if you remember. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and I do remember it kind of being a very slippery slope type of thing, like who's to determine what that line is, where, I'm just recalling my recollection, Mr. Howrong, I don't know if you remember. But as I vaguely recall, it was a discussion with the board at that time of- And where's the line drawn on-
Yeah, I don't recall that, but I don't see this as black and white as Mrs. Talbert does, because it says, "accept gratuitous gifts or favors that might impair or appear to impair professional judgment." Is this what we're looking at? Well, I don't think anyone, I don't think it would either impair or appear to impair if the IU gives me a TCHS mug, you know, to use in board meetings. It's not impairing my judgment on, as a board member. And I think the same is true for our teachers.
So, Mr. Howrong, and Ms. Talbert, actually, I think you, I think you just, I think might have hit the nail. The language is that the board discourages. It does not say prohibits. So it, so that's, so there is a difference between, you know, it's perhaps, you know, a minor difference, but there is a difference between discouraging versus prohibiting, because prohibiting would make it, you know, against, against policy for an employee to, whereas discouraging means that an employee can accept gifts, but it might not be, you know, it might be frowned upon.
But under authority, it does clarify that it's not a black and white policy. It's not a black and white prohibition in the same, in the same document, under authority.
Well, and to your, and Ms. Talbert, to your point, you know, I believe, I only have experience at the elementary level with my daughter at this point, but the PTO, at least the, you know, the elementary PTO is often, often, you know, can purchase gifts for, you know, for, or classes, can, will purchase, might purchase a gift for the teacher, you know, around the holiday time, which is a collective gift, but that's still being contributed. And whereas, whereas nothing, nothing in the existing policy specifies who's giving the gift, whether it's an individual family, whether it's, you know, the collective class. So I think, I agree with you. I think that there is, that if we are, if we're looking at this, if we're saying that this is going to be, that this seems like we're saying it cannot happen, then that does get violated pretty regularly.
If you're all, if you're reading of it, is that, no, if it's not intended to kind of curry favor or anything, and that we're really covered by the bottom part, like, and it's, it comes off in that way, I'm comfortable. I just wanted to draw it out, like, in my reading of it, I thought it was worthy of a discussion with you. Find, you find people to see how you did it.
Sorry, I just wanted to jump in and say, you brought up something, subject to PTOs, and I think from my experience on the PTOs, and as a class parent and stuff, you know, some of these gifts, we're not talking necessarily about a mug. We could be talking about several hundred dollars worth of, but then it gets into the slippery slope of, kind of like you're saying, what do we determine? So if the gift is above $200 or less than, you know, but we're not talking about a mug. So I understand your point. In my mind, it's almost contradictory. We discourage it, but they're not allowed to accept it. And in a sense, is a gift card a gratuity? I mean, could that be perceived? So like, I understand where you're coming from, and I guess I, I don't know, like, I agree with you to a point on that, and the wording to me seems kind of like it's conflicting.
And my intention would not to be to stifle what our PTOs generously do for our teachers, or to, I think we have excellent behaviors and practices. It's just a, it's just always a gut check, is are we enforcing our policies? And if we feel like it's in conflict.
I don't like the wording of discourages, because to me, like we've kind of said, those are earned, you know, if a family or a class wants to show their appreciation for their teacher and the work that's been done and whatnot. So I guess I, discouraging just sounds negative, but I, it's a slippery slope, so.
I think that we do need to be concerned about certain gifts, and I think it's very realistic to worry that a well-to-do family gives a ski weekend to a teacher. And if a teacher accepts a ski weekend, there's certainly going to be, it's certainly going to impair the teacher's ability to make professional judgments, or as a minimum, it's going to appear to impair that. So we need guardrails. It's just, how do we say it? If the PTO gives something, let's say it's a dinner, you know, at a local restaurant, but it's from the PTO, it's not from an individual family, that's not going to impair the teacher's judgment on, you know, giving some kind of favoritism to a student. So I, I think this guards against the kind of things we need to worry about and allows the kind of things we don't need to worry about. Maybe there's a better way to say it, but it looks okay to me.
Might I suggest, just from the conversation here, that we just send the policy to first reading, rather than this one-month review, and let's ponder this for a couple months?
Yeah, it works. We can move, we can move this, we can move this back to first reading for next month, for November.
To clarify, is that first reading for October or first reading for November?
First-
Well, we're moving it to first reading.
Send it to first reading next month. I'm prepping my predecessor, Dr. Hoffman, to be prepared to move that. This could be. Generally, this would be first reading, and it would go to second reading in November, but you can do what you would like. I'm just trying to clarify.
Is everyone's comfortable with that, with that timeframe?
We're moving it to first reading without any proposed changes right now. So I think tonight was the first reading.
Great. So okay, so we'll move, this will move to second reading for next month. So which means that it'll be up for final review and for final approval in January, since we did not discuss policy at the December re-arg meeting.
And then anybody who's got some suggestions about language, just get that to Mr. Allen.
Yep.
And just so the board is aware, that means next week, when you see the actual agenda, this will be removed from the review approval section, and it will show up in the first reading section for this month's agenda, based on the conversation that was just held, with no changes being made at this time.
Correct. Thank, Dr. Ryder, thank you for the flexibility there.
No problem. Moving on to section-
And before final approval, we will have gone through a holiday season, and if we had any problems, we'll react to it.
I see the strategy of the board. I understand. Moving into section 4.3, the policies that are noted for second reading, these policies were brought forward last month. There have not really been any changes to the three as noted, so they would be up for approval in November. Pause for any questions? All right, moving down to the newest policies, those listed in section 4.4, the policies for first reading. This is the first month that the board will be seeing them. Take a deep breath, there's a long list there, but I promise they are all related. So you will see 11 policies and administrative guidelines currently noted for first reading this month. There is a laundry list, the 103s, some 104s, some 247s, and some 249s. All of these were initially related to some changes coming to us through PSBA. We've made some changes to titles, but most importantly, we've also changed our reporting form as it relates to non-discrimination harassment, hazing, bullying, and so forth. We have always had reporting forms for these particular items. However, these reporting forms have been similar, but not the same. And at times when information is being shared by an entity, they are then asked to fill out multiple forms. So in an effort to be clear, transparent, and as efficient and effective for what could be a very emotional time for someone, we are looking at one form. You'll see it noted in each section, but it is the same form. So that's one of the major changes. Some of the other changes initially started with our Title IX guidance, as it was brought forward and then removed and brought forward, sort of under previous guidelines. So that's also some of the information that you will see within these changes. We paused some of them. You've seen them before. They are now being brought back, but the totality, we feel they all work together. And we have the one now consistent report form that you can use for a variety of needs to share information with the school district and get a response. I can certainly go into greater detail, but I also recognize we're looking for efficiency. So if you have questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer them.
Dr. Ryder, I'd like to thank you and the administration for kind of putting together that one reporting form, which is a standardized reporting form, you know, regardless of the type of, you know, behavior which is, which is being reported, is, I think, is going to be very, very helpful for our students and staff, and we'll make it, and it will take some of the onus off of them in terms of, in terms of reporting. For my colleagues, I would like to just make a quick note that for 247 Administrative Guideline 2, which is that hazing, notice to complainant and/or parents guardians of complaint, and 249 Administrative Guideline 2, notice to complainant and/or parents for bullying or cyberbullying. There are current, Dr. Ryder and I already discussed this, there are currently some minor differences in verbiage between those two forms. When you, when we see this policy next month, that second reading, those will be, those will be fleshed out. So it'll be, it'll be consistent language between, between the two, since it's a very, it's a very similar form, but there'll just be a couple of things cleaned up in that. Nothing which changes the meanings of the, of those notices, but it will just, it will just add consistency between those two forms, since they're related.
All right. And with that, obviously, this will be the last policy report that I bring forward. In November, Dr. Hoffman will be leading policy, and then from there, I'm not entirely sure what the plan will be, but he is prepared to continue the conversation. So I appreciate all the support from the board during the policy work, and certainly between now and next week. If there's any feedback, I'm happy to take it. But after that, I will no longer be available here to discuss the policies.
Dr. Ryder, thank you for all of your work on policy. It's, you've been, you've been a fantastic partner for both Mr. Howrong and his, his previous role as the policy chair and me as well. And I really greatly appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I believe it's back to you, Dr. Brata.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And thank you, Dr. Ryder. We know where to find you, though. Moving on to student activities with Ms. Talbert.
Thank you very much. Pat Clark will be coming up to lead us through the student activities report tonight.
Good evening. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to go to item 5.3 first. We have some representatives from the ski club here. This would be a voting item this month. The ski club is here to talk about a proposed trip to Utah, which would happen over spring break.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Heather Biddle. I am a teacher here at the high school and a very proud ski club advisor. So here tonight, we have five of our leaders from ski club who will introduce themselves and then take you through the slide presentation tonight.
Hi, I'm Chase Wilson.
Hi, I'm Julian Hart, and I'm a senior.
I'm William Bo, and I'm a senior also.
Hi, I'm Will Coleman, and I'm a senior.
Hello, I'm Melissa Lynn, and I'm a junior.
After much research into trips, trip options, we've decided to go with Ski Sync Services for our spring break ski trip to Park City, Utah. This company was created back in 2010 and has very good reviews. The estimated cost per student is about $1,500. The package includes four nights of lodging, daily breakfast, three days of lift tickets, round trip airfare, and transportation to and from the hotel. All taxes and fees are included. The package does not include lunch at the mountain, souvenirs, et cetera. Ski Club will do fundraisers to help pay for the nightly dinners.
Through Ski Sync, as a group, all members will be flying out of Newark, New Jersey Airport on Delta Airlines. Members are not allowed to book flights separately. Our tentative flights leave on March 30th at 7:00 a.m. with an airport arrival time of approximately 5:00 a.m. And we will return home on April 3rd, 5:45 p.m. Similar to international club art or language trips, students and parents will plan to carpool to the airport for drop-off and pickup with one central meeting location.
While in Utah, we'll be staying at the Doubletree Hilton Park City, the club of Yarrow. Students will be staying in quad rooms. The chaperones in student rooms will be in the same hallways, and there are going to be morning wake-up calls and room checks each night. The hotel is located just a short shuttle ride to the mountain, which we will take as a group to ski each day.
To help determine eligibility for this trip, priority will be given to 11th and 12th graders with an advanced or above-average skiing or snowboarding level. Since this is over spring break, spring sports players will need to see if their trip works with their schedule. As with all ski club trips, attendance is not mandatory. Moving forward, the club hopes to do a big trip every two years to give younger members something to look forward to. Just like preseason checks, members and parents are responsible for checking their gear. No special gear is required for west coast terrain.
Pending board approval, there will be an interest meeting for members and then signups for the trip will start. Ski Sync sets up a portal with payment deadlines, and parents will pay through the portal. Mrs. Biddle will hold a parent informational meeting to review all trip details prior to departure, and we will use an app while on trips for reminders and contact with chaperones.
Okay, so I come in with the heavy slide with emergency procedures. So I thank you for allowing Ski Club to bring this to you. And I would love to point out that Julian Hart is, he really led this charge and did all of the research. I had tasked him last year with finding some options. The kids looked at a bunch of different places, not only Park City, Utah, but we looked at Colorado and Whistler. There was a ton of different options, and this one really was the best for a direct flight and a short trip from the airport to the hotel and skiing. So I do keep an emergency binder. I keep it for all of our trips, medical release forms with contact information, overnight medical medication forms I do bring for our overnight trips, which in the past has only been Vermont. We have not needed a nurse in the past on those overnight trips. We have had a nurse go with us for one student a couple of years ago on local trips, but those will be vetted through our nurse and through the athletic department as well. So I did add a copy of a parent credit card for emergencies. Two years, two summers ago, I attended the international trip when we went across the way to Germany, and Keely Lanyan does a fantastic job, and she included a copy of a parent credit card just for, in case of emergencies, and in case any students need to be sent home for disciplinary purposes, that we can purchase a flight and we send them home, and parents are aware of that consequence if their child does anything that breaks our school policy, since they are all in effect while we are away. One of the great things about some of the bigger mountains are the emergency services that they have available. So Ski Patrol is on the mountain at all times. They do have a medical clinic on site. There is Redstone Health Center. There is an urgent care clinic, and the Intermountain Park City Hospital. Just as with local trips, if any of our students do get hurt and have to be taken to a hospital via ambulance, one of our chaperones does travel with those students, so they are not alone, and stays with them during their medical care. And then parents are contacted regarding any of the incidents that happen with students, if there are any injuries. There won't be. At this time, if there, I know there may be some questions, and we'd be happy to field any of them from you. We hope to cover everything and all of the slides.
I'll just say, I think this is really cool. I can just speak to my experience within the district. When I was in middle school, they started a ski club, and it gave me the opportunity to go skiing. So I love that this is out there, and good for you guys for doing the research. And I think the trip sounds amazing. I do have one question. The airport for Newark, why was that part of the package? Is that where this company flies out of? Why there?
So it was the easiest for us to get a direct flight to Park City, Utah?
I also have a question about the flight. I know that 7:00 a.m. flights just mean a really late night for the students, but as a parent, I have an emotional and visceral reaction to having to make that flight. So if there's anything later available, your mom and dad might really appreciate it.
Thank you for the input. I probably won't do much sleeping the lead-up to, just for all the worrying that I'll be doing that they'll all get there on time.
This seems great. I was in Park City this summer. I haven't skied it, but if you have a chance to go to the Olympic Park, it is definitely worth a visit. I think you can probably do that late afternoon, evening, after you've gotten your skiing in. So, thank you, guys. So thank you guys for coming and doing such a good job with the presentation that we had very few questions. You were very thorough.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if you have anything follow up wise, please feel free to contact me um and let Mr. Clark know. Thank you, guys. You did awesome.
So thank you for allowing me to uh to share that item first, and again, that will be something we ask uh the board to vote on next week at the board meeting. So next, a lot of good stuff happening in student activities. The college and career initiative. So this is just an introduction to the initiative. There's been a lot of conversation about it. It's it's really an exciting initiative. When Dr. Hoffman asked me to be a key contributor, I immediately said yes. And it's a it's an opportunity to bring a lot of people together um to see how we can best support our students and our families as they navigate their post-secondary choices. So some opening thoughts is that we want to provide this wide range of opportunities. And and the key point is this, we're already doing a lot to support our students. Annie Davis came in yes last year as a dedicated college and career counselor. Um our school counselors have done amazing work for years. Um we started a career speaker series. We have thorough planning conferences. We have a new college uh counseling center website. We've increased TCHS. We had a career fair for the first time for for students who might be looking at options other than uh traditional four-year schools. So this is not about um about saying we're not doing enough. It's about how do we maximize those opportunities? I think the reality is that uh post-secondary is a is a big decision for families. It's big in a lot of ways. It's it's um it's a financially impactful decision as well. So how can we put as much information out there for our students and our families and create experiences that will um that will really give them a firm foundation to make a choice? And and at the end there, that conversation from where do you want to go to what do you want to do? And not, we certainly do not expect students to have their their career and their life figured out in high school. But where where do your passions lie? What are your talents? What are you good at? What do you want to explore? Like, that should really be at the foundation of our conversations with young people and with families. There we go. So this is a comprehensive initiative. Um thi- this is not a one-person job. It's district admin, building admin, board members, teachers, students, parents. These are all people who will be part of our initial group. So there was an initial admin meeting in September just to talk about the initiative and to um and to and to get get it off the ground and running. In September, we met with a group of UHS teachers who will be a key part of our steering committee. We have teachers um who have experience in in different avenues with college and career. Um and we have a pretty, I think we've got a pretty good cross section of teachers from across disciplines and experiences. Next week, we expand to a bigger committee. Some of the board, some of the board members will be joining us. Parents will be joining us. Students will be joining us, and our next step would be to add alumni and and engaged community partners. But again, this is this is a long process. So the next slide, we've really initially talked about three different paths to explore. This is not the final answer. We are still in the development and conversation phase. But as you start to talk about what are the kinds of things we can explore, so there's a there's a path of school programming, right? How can we incorporate experiences that will help students to better prepare for their futures? And some of that is is adding on to things that we already have. So for example, freshman freshman seminar, we have a sophomore seminar. There there are just so many things that we can build on that we already have. So so what are the what are the foundational things we can do in school? How can we add to coursework? You know, what what are what options do we have, for example, when a new personal finance requirement comes in to maybe tie some college and career into it? So that's one avenue, um and it's and and in itself, that could be an initiative. The second, the second path there is dual enrollment. Now, what what options do we have to give our students exposure to college-level material? Uh there's a lot of data out there that talks about the value of dual enrollment courses in addition to to AP courses and IB, which we don't have. But all of those things have value for students that they get as they get to the post-secondary level. We have an agreement with West Chester, but the the chance to go out and explore. There are a number of school districts who have done some really pretty incredible things in partnering with local colleges. Um and meeting kids all across the range, too, right? Not just per se your typical, maybe the students who are in AP courses, but students at all different levels have access to to post-secondary work. And then finally, what exploration opportunities can we create, right? What external, what external experiences can we give? Can we do uh externships in uh exploration? Can we do internships? I'll give you an example to piggyback off of something that that Mr. Webb presented. We have a we have a student help desk program, right? So maybe we get down the road, and this is just an example of an idea where we build out a an internship experience where students who complete X amount of work can maybe do an internship here, right? And we assign credit for that internship. How do we, how do we maybe look at ways to use uh senior project or days around PSAT days for for exploration? Where students can go out, right? How can we connect them with with business partners, with people in the community? So it's it's really exciting. I mean, you get fifteen adults in a room, and the next thing you know, you're an hour and a half down a conversation, and you're like, oh, maybe we should talk about that next avenue. Right? I mean, it's it's really very exciting. I mean, there are pieces. Uh I talked with Mrs. Talbert about this that may live in student activities. There are pieces that may come through curriculum and instruction as they relate to school. So so this is big. This is comprehensive, and and we're really, I think, looking forward to it. It's a it's got a lot of potential. And then finally, our path forward, right, using our review cycle. As I just said, I think it's going to be really important to be methodical and to use processes, right? What we decide to do, we will want to do well, get the most bang for our buck, and most importantly, best support students and families. On October twenty first, we're going to gather some data. That's curriculum council. We will have a short survey as part of curriculum council to gather some initial feedback. On the twenty second is our first uh bigger meeting in terms of college and career. And then in November, we will um bring a more formal, I think, more detailed presentation to the board about first steps once we get our bigger group together. So that is, and then finally, what wins can we find along the way? There are things in the pipeline, for example, that that may fall outside of that review cycle. Yeah, I know there's some work potentially with a with another AP course that may come in and have some experienced things. Freshmen and sophomore seminar are already set up, so we may be able to to make some immediate tweaks to freshman and sophomore seminar. But for the most part, anything that we're not doing now, I think we want to be really careful and methodical and get out and see best practice, gather information. Take our time and make sure that we we do it well. So that's the first update on on college and career initiative. Any questions?
I just want to share with you, I'm I'm as excited as you are. And I think you're the right person to be um leading this team or an important person on this team. So I appreciate all the work you've done so far, and I'm looking forward to hearing what what comes of this, because I think it's going to be very impactful to our students and our families.
Thank you. It's a and it's going to be a team effort. Um we we have so much talent in our district. And I'm really looking forward to to kind of being being the guide and letting people go and do their thing, right? I mean, that's sometimes when you get the best result, we when you let your your good people go out and do the work and bring it back to you, so. And then finally, in student activities.
Well, before you leave.
Mr. Hellrun, go ahead.
Are you looking at what some other districts in Pennsylvania and maybe beyond are doing?
Absolutely. We've had a few um a few introductory conversations. Mr. Autobard has a colleague who is at Downingtown, and they they have really um kind of jumped into the dual enrollment programs, right? Which is something that I think we need to have some, take some time to do. Kennett has a future reni Kennett program, which is also great for students, but doesn't really look like the dual enrollment program that Downingtown has set up. It's more of a a a capstone course cluster path. So we're we're looking locally, and and I think that the next part, Mr. Hellrun, is to take a look at nationally, kind of who's doing what? And how can we uh how can we get into best practices?
I think TE has a pretty strong uh work release component that seniors can step into senior year if they qualify.
We do.
Sure if that's best for us, but it's certainly good to look at, and there may be some things in Western Pennsylvania as well.
I would say Ms. Davis has uh experience from TE. That was her previous district. And um so we are looking there, and it's and it's interesting, right? While they have a a process that occurs at the end of senior year, maybe the timing would be better prior to the end of senior year, right? Just in terms of college application process and things, so I mean, there's a lot out there. Mr. and Alan and I did a a a morning at Delaware County in August with some dual enrollment things as well. So we with the the net is cast uh far and wide, and and lots of people are bringing contributions. And finally, um it's been pretty busy this month. The so the last item I'd like to talk about is part of the activities uh strategic plan that we're in the middle of um right now. And as part of that, we took a look at our athletic participation philosophy at the middle school and the high school. And really, it's something I came into kind of midstream. Mrs. Talbert has been in it, Mr. Vogel, Mr. Smith, uh Mr. Anderson at the middle school, Mr. Crater in his in his former role. And so I want to provide an update on kind of where this subcommittee has gone and what we think the future of of athletics uh can be, particularly at the middle school level. So I think it's the previous one, Mrs. Jones. There we go. Thank you. So the first, the first slide is kind of our why, right? Our district mission statement, our portrait of a graduate initiative, um our community, community-developed athletic values and standards, right? Those are all things that identify the benefits of extracurriculars, including sports, performing arts. And 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 really starting with that foundation at the middle school level. You know, we offer these things because we believe they they provide life lessons, right? The things that you learn on the field or on the court or during the performance, and especially during the practices. Stay with you long after you've actually finished playing your sport. We want students to be able to try something new, to be able to connect with their peers, stay active, have fun. And so what we want to do is is take a look at how can we provide as many opportunities for students for as long as we can. So this next slide talks about roster sizes, right? And we we want to look for ways to keep students. And when the time comes where we have to limit rosters as students get into high school, to be able to provide lots of other opportunities for them. We have, we have a really comprehensive program um in performing arts. We've we've got, I think, a hundred and ten clubs are officially registered at the high school this year. So so there are a lot of options. In terms of middle school rosters, right, this is a great time to let kids figure it out, right? Try a new sport, um put yourself out there a little bit. Get involved, stay active, right? That's that's a a primary goal. And one of the things we'd like to do is this, to not limit roster sizes at the middle school in the fall and the spring sessions. And in the winter, look for opportunities to expand basketball rosters. Basketball is just the most challenging right now in terms of having a single gym and a split season and a short season. And if you've ever been to a middle school basketball game, it's about forty minutes out of your time, and that's it for an entire middle school game. So so there are some challenges with middle school basketball. On the flip side, having been a parent, URA is a robust program and and provides lots of opportunities. And and it's not basketball that we're seeing an issue with, um especially boys for boys coming back out for high school basketball. So high school rosters at the ninth grade and junior varsity level, we're still looking for opportunities. But they may have to limit roster sizes in high school. Um and if and if an athlete isn't on the trajectory, we think it's it's important to have adults around to help the school, to help the child get to the next activity. Right? Um coaches should be willing to have some feedback and conversation with students and and still look to maximize roles. Again, varsity would be our most competitive, right? You build rosters for a certain reason, and and you may have to limit your roster sizes. Although we do have unlimited rosters at the high school in terms of uh football, track and field, cross-country cheer. We have some opportunities where where there are no cuts. Uh this this slide, I I like it because it talks about um in terms of participation and competitiveness, right? So at the middle school level, it's about the the participation end, right? And the competitiveness is kind of here, and as you work through the process, now your varsity level becomes competitive, and maybe your participation drops. So at the middle school level, we'd really like to aim for that maximum participation by the maximum number of students. We'd like to, we're going to get to a point where if you're on the team and you're honoring your commitment, try and play every kid in every game. And that's going to take some work, right? It's going to take some work with our coaches, but we think that we can get there. Ninth grade and junior varsity, uh trying to play as many kids as possible, go into a game, trying to play everybody, but it but it might not happen. And then obviously, the varsity level, coach's decision, it's competitive. But again, coaches look for roles and opportunities for student athletes to get them into the game. At the varsity level, I think it's really important our our coaches do this, but they should communicate with players about their roles and and look for for playing time. So and finally, so so where our subcommittee is with the recommendation is, create some structures to provide resources and support a no-cut philosophy with patent. Tasks. So we want to work with our coaches to develop strategies and maximize opportunities, right? We need to work with, how do you plan player rotations? How do you manage practices? How do you do those kinds of things? We'll have to work on finalizing some resources. Uh there could be increased transportation costs, official fees. Rosters, you, one way to do it is you increase your number of games. Or if you increase your roster, you add a few more games, and one model that's out there is you split your squad, let's say, into into three groups. And group A and B play this game, group B and C play this game, and you rotate. So everybody gets the opportunity to play in games. And then the one we we want to do some work on and return to the board with is, you know, can we create practice coaches, right? So the model would be that if you're going to keep a certain percentage of players, that there would be a practice coach supplemental available, right? That you would get um someone who could come in and work practices, and the person who has the the coaching supplemental would coach in the games. And then our goal is to return with a financial needed sal uh needs analysis. It could, I said would, it could, in the worst case, we think, be at the twenty thousand dollar mark. But again, we have to look at where we, what are we doing now? What are we spending now? What would increase participation fees due to that number? There may be times when we don't max out those hypothetical part-time practice coach supplementals. So um that brings us to to our update, particularly on uh middle school athletics and where we'd like to go with the philosophy. Questions?
And I want to just chime in real quick to make super clear the role of the practice coach. And it's really about supervision, that if we're going to have more kids, that there's enough adults to keep them safe, to keep people safe.
Absolutely, right? You need supervision that the the coach would set the practice, and maybe it's stations, or this group's doing this, or this group's doing that. And I'll have to say in spirit, we're there. We didn't, we didn't cut an athlete from middle school this year. Our middle school coaches went, and they kept the half a dozen extra kids because it was good to to keep them. And um so in spirit, we are already moving that way, and this would be a step towards just uh towards formalizing it.
Yeah, Lincoln, go ahead.
So at those practices, the practice coaches are in addition to the normal coaching staff?
Correct.
Okay.
What are there questions from the board?
Not so much a question, just a a couple of comments. You know, my last two years uh in as an undergraduate, and then for one year thereafter, I coached high school sports. All three years doing football, and then one year as the head tennis coach. And uh I am so pleased um by the work that's been done here. It is so much in alignment with my personal view, and just a couple of of comments there. As a football coach, we use, and you can appreciate this, you know, we said the best thing about having sophomores on your team was that they were going to become juniors, because you very rarely played sophomores in varsity football. But you never knew which of that group was going to mature physically or mentally or emotionally into being the starter on next year's team. And the only way that you have a chance to find out is you have to keep them on your squad as a sophomore and as a freshman and let them work their way up into the program. So that's so important. Not just, not just to your program as a coach, but also to the kids who get a chance to be a part of that organization for four years and have continuity and really be connected to the school for their entire time. And if it leads back its tentacles into the middle school and allows somebody to have seven years or six years of participation, all the better. So I'm so pleased by by us taking the very proactive step here. The other thing I'll tell you is that as a tennis coach, I had seventeen kids come out. I was allocated three tennis courts. I was allocated three tennis courts for practice space. I did not cut anybody. And that meant that I had to make some sacrifices as a coach and be very creative to find a solution so that I could keep all 17 kids on my staff. We made the state playoffs for the first time in school history that year, which is a great accomplishment. But as I sit here 30 years later, the thing that I'm happiest about is that I kept 17 kids in my program. So philosophically, I'm so aligned with what we're doing here. And I just have to put that on the record and saying that we are going down the right path by trying to keep kids in these programs and provide the opportunity. So I I really appreciate the work of the committee on on this particular effort.
I I got cleanup duty on this one. A lot of the the heavy work was done, Mr. Crater, Mr. Vogel, Mr. Smith, Ms. Talbert, Mr. Anderson at the middle school. So I think they get the the chunk of the credit for for moving this forward.
And Dr. Hoffman. Dr. Hoffman saw this at T E in practice and he was the one that said, we can figure it out. It's 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 a little bit of money, some years it's more, some years it's less, but the it'll pay it'll pay back. I I have a personal reason this was an interest. My my children were born into a volleyball family and neither played volleyball because middle school cuts were brutal and they were late bloomers. So that I think that just it it leaves time for development, it leaves time for exploration and then and then choices. You said so well, by the time they get to high school, we need adults, it is a different thing. And if it just you really weren't meant, if she still wasn't meant to be a volleyball player, maybe crew would have been found at that point. But thank you for your kind words. Other comments, questions?
Just a couple of comments. First, sort of an anecdote, a week or two ago, I was at one of our Chester County schools and the football coach was talking about how they started with 100 and they were down to 80. And the thinking was the 20 we lost are probably the 20 who would benefit maybe the most from staying there. So things that can make it interesting and pull the kids in are positive things. And if they leave, let it let them leave to another sport. And I know we've been doing that for for years. And secondly, if you want the best practices, Mr. Clark, just find coaches like you. Because I used to come out to watch the football team, just to watch the master and his staff and the students, always moving, always communicating, always learning. Enthusiastic and so don't forget what you knew then and please pass that on to the next generation of coaches.
Thank you, Mr. Hellring, I appreciate that. And and just in closing, it is activities are in full swing. We have senior nights, we have playoffs for multiple teams that will start next week. The fall play is on the horizon, elementary clubs are up and running, other clubs and activities are going at the high school and middle school. So if you're ever looking for something to do, odds are you won't have to travel but to one of our schools to find something going on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I think we're ready to end that report and move on with our agenda. Thank you, Ms. Talbert, moving on to communications with Ms. Loomis.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. I would like to invite Ms. LaRoya to come up to give our communications report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item, item number 6.1, is actually a proposal that I am sharing with all of you to review for this month. In hopes that we would ask you to vote for it in the month of November. So you may know, as a part of the district's 2025 to 26 goals, our district has committed to redeveloping our website. For improved alignment with our district values and for enhanced user experience, particularly when it comes to federal digital accessibility guidelines. We've chosen to continue to partner with Final Site on a select custom design at a one time cost, excuse me, of $22,525. As a current Final Site client, design services come at a 15% discount and include design development, implementation, technical review and launch support. This item is being shared again for informational purposes and the hope is that you all might vote in the month of November. The duration of the project currently is expected to be approximately 18 weeks. And I say approximately, they can complete the project in as as quickly as 18 weeks. But that puts us about mid spring, which is an odd time to launch a website. So it it may serve us for multiple reasons to use some extra time and look to launch sometime over the summer. When, you know, there are not so many eyeballs on on that site and get everybody up and running for the next school year. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, but wanted to make sure that you all saw the the proposal and statement of work.
Was the bidding process competitive?
It was not. We are already locked into a five year contract with Final Site and we're very happy with them as current customers. So we're we're continuing to move down that road. Although what I will say is, one, Final Site recently bought up one of its competitors, which was Blackboard, who offered a lower cost solution. But my experience tells me that Final Site is kind of a middle of the road approach. It's it's not, in the past, it was not the least expensive option. Blackboard was the least expensive option when I've done this previously. And it certainly wasn't the most expensive either. So I think Final Site being a content management system, a platform that's built specifically for K to 12 school districts. Allow allows us to provide kind of an enterprise level product for a price that the school district can afford. That's what they sell themselves on.
And and just for clarification, is the 22,525 inclusive of the 15% discount?
Yes.
Mr. Schartz, I used to build websites in my pharma life and I would say education website pricing is better than other website pricing. So I I I, Ms. LaRoya asked me to look this over with that knowledge and I feel good about this price.
And I I should add too that Final Site, I believe, still has the market when it comes to Chester County school districts. Most of us are with Final Site. And in fact, the Chester County Intermediate Unit made the move to Final Site when it purchased Blackboard. So many, it's not uncommon for school districts in our area, certainly, and in other areas to be Final Site clients. It's a really good question, though, thank you. Other question? All right, if not, I'll I'll move on to the the report, the fun stuff. All right. Okay, well, I'll just talk you through it. If that's okay. So in communications and community relations, our work is well underway towards 2025 to 26 goals. There we go. Last month, you voted to approve a contract with the Chester County Intermediate Unit to conduct a program review that will ultimately help us develop a communications and community relations strategic plan. If you move to the next, oh, you know what? I can move to the next slide. All right, there we go. This month, the IU will conduct its first step of that review, which is a communications ideals conversation with our cabinet team. And that's actually happening tomorrow. The IU will ask our district and school leaders four key questions. What do you want your audiences to know about UCFSD? What do you want your audiences to think and feel about UCSUCFSD? And what do you want your audiences to do? How do you want them to interact with us? And what outcomes do you hope to see from successful audience interaction? The IU's goal is to establish the communications ideals by which they will measure the review of our current communications practices. If any of you would like to answer those questions, please contact me and we can set up a time to talk as well. I would I would welcome that. Later this fall, the IU will move on to focus groups, surveys and material review. And I expect that they will be prepared to present a report this winter. This month, we've also formed our digital accessibility task force. As a reminder, the Department of Justice ruled in April of 2024, updating its regulations for Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA. The final rule has specific requirements about how public entities like ours ensure that digital content is accessible to people with disabilities. So we already do this really well when it comes to our educational programming and when it comes to our physical spaces. And what what the Department of Justice is basically now saying is that the ADA extends into the digital world, knowing that so many of our programs and services take place there, right? So it gives me optimism, knowing that we do all the other things so well already that we'll be able to seamlessly shift into the digital space, too. Beyond being the right thing to do for all members of our community, failure to comply with the DOJ ruling by April of 27 could result in reputational damage, private lawsuits. Court ordered enforcement and fines up to $115,000 for the first violation and $230,000 for subsequent violations. So for other reasons, too, it's really important that we comply. And our task force is meeting biweekly, starting with an audit to identify the top publicly facing digital systems in use across the district. It's our goal to share a plan for making content across those systems accessible to the WICAG 2.1 standard, which will unpack what WICAG means at a later date. But that's the technical standard this winter with continuing compliance through the deadline. So we hope to have an initial plan by this winter, knowing that that plan will take us through 2027. And then finally, for fun, our year long celebration of gratitude continues. We're especially proud to coordinate our district's efforts to say thank you to all who support our students and staff and schools, including at the Unionville Community Fair that Ms. Talbert mentioned earlier. And coming soon, the Greet and UCFSD Trunk or Treat. And if you haven't already, we hope you'll save the date and join us on Saturday, October 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the middle school campus. Fun for all ages. I did a YouPost interview this evening with a high school student who's really excited. And I also know that there are littles in our community who should and will be equally as excited. So this is open to every district resident, regardless of of what age they are, we welcome all. Finally, we're working with, oh, oh, and how could I skip? There's a few photos from this past weekend as well. This is, I won't spend too much time, I'm going the wrong direction. But this gentleman was an alum of our district and he was thrilled to come up to our table. I think Dr. Barata and Ms. Talbert, you may have been there for this conversation, but he was thrilled to come up and tell us that he was an alum. And that he moved back into the district with his 18 month old specifically so that that child could attend our schools. So he walked away with a very special stuffed longhorn that we told him he should keep until the day he graduates. So this, these were the kinds of moments that I think made our community fair really worth it. And it was it was cool to connect with alumni who who were coming back, but also all different kinds of community members as well. All right. And finally, we're working with Dr. Hoffman on a special new superintendent's newsletter. So we wanted you all to be aware of this. It's expected this fall and it will feature a letter from Dr. Hoffman and then the latest and greatest on UCFSD and our schools. It will print and send to all of our residents. It's been a very good, very busy month. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help answer those. Otherwise, it's back to you, Ms. Loomis.
Thank you, Ms. LaRoya. And if nobody has any questions or comments, that concludes communications. Thank you, Ms. Loomis. Thank you, Ms. LaRoya. Moving on to facilities with Vice Chair Dr. Simonson.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. We have in facilities, one voting item next week regarding an engineering design proposal for HVAC renovations at Unionville. And Mr. Weitzel will brief us on that and also give us an update on the long range facilities plan. Mr. Weitzel?
Thank you, Dr. Simonson, and good evening all. So we'll jump right into the first item here, which is the approval of an engineering design proposal to develop plans and specs for the upgrading slash replacement of our main rooftop HVAC air distribution equipment at Unionville Elementary. Specifically, the existing heat recovery units or or HRUs will be replaced with dedicated outside air system units or DOAS units. Additionally, the designs will be developed and bid to replace existing large group space unit ventilators with new rooftop units. Increasing operational efficiency as well as indoor comfort. And when I say the large group spaces, that's the gym, the auditorium and the cafeteria. That the current HRUs cannot address humidity control, which leads to increased work by the classroom UVs to remove the humidity. By controlling the humidity with with new DOAS units, we will reduce wear and tear and extend the life of our existing classroom UVs. The existing rooftop units are at the end of their life expectancy of 20 to 25 years. And this design proposal is from RTN Engineering Consultants, as you can see there, in the amount of 148,550. This work, this project is funded in the long range facilities plan for next year, 2026. So if we get design started now, bid over over the winter, it will allow us enough time to procure the units and do the work next summer, 2026. Any questions on this proposal? Very good, we'll jump right into the second item tonight, which is our annual update and review of the long range facilities plan. Excuse me. Just to be clear, this is not a request for additional funding. That request will come next year. Instead, this is a review of year two project spending and a preview of year three projects. So yeah, Ms. Jones, you want to go ahead and bring this up? And hopefully I can click through it because I'm going to click through this pretty quickly. And I'll highlight just a few items as we go. I'll stop at the end of each section and after if there are any questions. But before we get started, I do just want to give a shout out to our capital projects coordinator, Josh Fazio. Who coordinated the work on these projects and collaborated to put all this information together for us here tonight. So this, as we said, the common contents, section, section one is mostly historical information. And we're going to skip through this for now. If you haven't read it before, it is worth reading. Section two is about the 2025 projects. You can see on the middle of the slide here, we budgeted just over 6 million for 2025 and we committed to approximately 5.7. Which provides a rollover amount of about $300,000 to the 2026 funds. Some of the details and how how we arrived to that, you can see there, we we were just under the planned expenses by 172,000. We added 770 or 767,000 worth of projects. We deferred 2.9 million dollars worth of projects and we advanced 2.1 or $2 million worth of projects. And the complete accounting of these projects from from 2025 are are on the next two pages here, which gives you a status update as well as what projects were moved in in and out. And that gets you to the bottom line number there. So just under budget by about 304,000. Just going through a couple of pictures here from last summer, the upper left are the two new high school chillers. The upper right is a before and after the high school kitchen floor. You see the upper level there was, we 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 did it in two asides. The the top part there was the new work and the bottom part there was work that hadn't been done yet. The bottom three are in process pictures of the new of the high school roof restoration project. The second page here is some of the site work projects, the left side on the top. Is the replacement, reline the back play play area of Patton Middle School, including the basketball courts there. The bottom left is milling and paving of the Hillendale, the front lot. The top middle there is Hillendale Gymnasium entrance where we replaced the sidewalk there. The middle is an additional FDK room at Hill Hilldale, which was created. And the right side is outdoor play areas at the Three Alum entry schools. And the final slide here of pictures, the upper pictures and the right side, I'll say, are are the new are the new wastewater treatment plant at Chad's Ford. The bottom left side is Hillendale's LGI roof. We have some before and after pictures there, you can see on the bottom and then the new metal roofing that is covering that. And then the bottom right is a courtyard at UE, which addressed water infiltration issues in in those classrooms and the cafeteria space below. That's all for section two on the 2025 product projects. Does anyone have any questions about those? Going on to section three is a preview of 26 through 28. Here you can kind of see how our 2426 bond fund period is is ending next year. And the next three year borrow will start in 27. We're showing approximately 6.4 million in projects for 2026. Click through these quickly. There are still at the middle school, just a couple of projects which we are holding as a just in case. And the rest of them are still kind of. just in case, and the rest of them are still kind of crossed out and, and not accounted, accounted for. The biggest piece of work is, as you can see here, the HVAC upgrade at Unionville Alum Men entry school, right about $3 million. Also, at the end of this section here, at, at the bottom, we have a nice summary of the 2421 on 26 bond borrowing. We had $5 million going in. We borrowed 14 million. And when all three years are accounted for, we expect to invest approximately 18.3, which right now leaves approximately 730,000 to roll over to the next borrowing. Seven, it's about 720,000. Page 17 here, we provided this for information. It's a summary of the design costs for the new middle, middle school project by design phase. These costs will also be included in the feud to bar, bar, barring as well. That's all for section three there. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I, if I could, if you could go back to number 16. And I just want to couple that with the, the information here with effectively the decision to cross off investment in some of the items from Patton Middle School. And to only be $700,000 to the good argues that either we've accelerated other projects that were farther out in the long-range facilities plan, or the cost of the projects that we're actually doing has escalated to the point where we needed to, to spend more money than anticipated. Which of those options or what's the balance between those two options? Because otherwise we should have two or two and a half million dollars in that rollover amount rather than 700,000.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I could give you a complete accounting of, of that. Right now, I, I would say the majority of those funds are projects that we have moved up a, a year or two from, from the long-range facilities plan.
And what's the, so if that's the case, what is kind of the domino effect of that? Because, because it would argue that the plans that we contemplated a few years ago. I mean, does the entire, does the entire long-range facilities plan get shifted to the left because of our decision on Patton? Or is there an opportunity for us to save some capital dollars three, five, seven years down the line? Because there's only so much acceleration that you can do unless we've been, unless we've been under budgeting consistently on our capital needs.
Yeah, as, as, as we started to look towards the next three and 10-year timeframes of these projects, we had definitely under budgeted what some of that work is going to be. So there is going to be, you know, an increase in work just because when we brought these forward in 2024, we did not anticipate or, or plan for the escalation that we have seen in construction projects, you know, in, in, really from 23 on. So to answer your question, there is going to be some impact from the middle school. Once we determine exactly what the middle school looks like as we go forward with that design. And those product, proper projects may not need to come back and be expended at all. Or we might need to reprioritize some product projects in the long-range facilities plan to, to, to pick those back up.
Right. And, and taking it then to the natural logical conclusion, which is if we decided to not pursue a new build middle school, we're going to have to fill back in a lot of deferred maintenance that we've been basically crossing off the list for Patton Middle School. Trying to dispel the, the common misperception that, that maintaining the current middle school is a free option to us. It's a very expensive option if we decide to maintain Patton Middle School. And because of the deferred maintenance that we're basically crossing off the list now, that bill could be substantial.
That's correct. Any additional questions on section three here? All right, we'll just go quickly on to section four. As, as I did talk about a little bit, this is the 10, 10-year project list. There hasn't been any, I'll say significant changes in these product, projects. And we plan to make, take a more detailed look next year when we do the feud due to borrowing for the next three-year tranche of projects, which would be from 27 to 29. Section five is just historical info, the only information we really updated was the current enrollment projections. The first slide here is existing school data. The second slide here is, are those enrollment projections? This info comes from the demographic study that we had done as part of the, of, we had done as part of the middle school fees, feasibility study. The third slide here is the annual investment in comparison to current replacement value. This slide has not been updated, but will be updated next year. One thing that is important to know is the current replacement value figures are going to go up, which is going to suggest that we should be investing more in our facilities. But we do have to balance that with the possible new middle school project as well. So the next borrowing, we are still looking at that $6 million per year investment for the next borrow, which will be in 27, 28 and 29. But the annual investment after that may need to be adjusted higher. That's everything that, that I have, but one last chance for any questions? Seeing none, I'll pass it back to you, Dr. Simonson.
Thank you, Mr. Weitzel. There's no other discussion items for facilities. Dr. Barata, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Simonson. Moving on to finance with Mr. Schertz.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Dady for the finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Schertz. So we have four items, two voting items for next week and two informational items. 8.1 is a continuation of the discussion that we've had in August and September on the property tax rebate program. So there have been no changes to the program itself. A slight change from the way I explained it in September. The resolution actually will be approved in June. It's got to be a part of our annual resolution that the board does every June when they set the mileage rates on taxes. So it will be part of that resolution every year, part of that recommended resolution every year. This approval, this month will just basically direct the administration to include this property tax rebate program in that resolution in June. And then every June, when we approve the budget and approve the real estate tax resolution, we will include this information in there. And that'll allow us to capture any changes from the state rebate program, from the homestead program, from the way that we have to, I mean, something major of changing taxes in the state of Pennsylvania. The annual approval will allow us to capture those changes. So that's the best way to do this rebate program. But again, in terms of the rebate program itself, it's the same program that was discussed in August and September. Moving on to item 8.2, which is this increase to the 2025, 26 school lunch prices. So the last couple of years, we've increased the lunch prices, the June prior, leading into the year. This year we did not. We kept them flat. There have been some increases in costs, both from our grocery bill, a minor increase, but also to labor. We've been having some staffing issues, so we increased pay rates last month. This will be how we're going to fund those increases. So it will be a 25 cent increase to the elementary and middle school lunches. Elementary lunch will be $3.35 and middle school will be $3.60. And you can see up on the screen there is where we fall within the, some neighboring districts. We're still in a good spot. This will allow us again to, to really continue our strong food service program that we've offered the past couple of years. The only reason why it's elementary and middle school is there are the schools that are on the national school lunch program. The high school is not. The high school lunch, lunch fluctuates really depending on what's being served that day. There is a set meal price that comes with different things at the high school, but most of the stuff that's bought are à la carte pricing.
Mr. Dady, I, this is just catching my attention at the meeting. I missed this in prior review. Would it be possible, would, would there be any objection from administration from delaying the implementation until the following Monday, just to allow communication? I feel like anytime you're raising prices, even though this feels de minimis, just communicating with our parents in the elementary and middle school that we are raising the price. Here's the rationale for the, the price increase. Communicate that we're still well within the range for our neighboring school district and allowing the price effect to just happen a few days later. Just kind of feels like a good practice communication item to me, but I'm, I'm throwing it out as a suggestion, not a, not a demand or anything that I have, but maybe get feedback from my colleagues or administration on making that minor adjustment.
And we can, I mean, we can make it the week after, we can make it November 1st.
Actually, actually, Mr. Schatz, I was actually going to suggest kicking it to the, to giving it a week and a half nation, starting on November 3rd. That way it's the start of the new month. So, which is the month, which is that Monday.
Yeah, that's fine. If the, if that's what the board wants, we could make that change.
It would be my preference to have a communication that goes out, just that we're making the change and have an explanation. That this is not a usual business, this is not a usual business practice of this board or this, this school district. But because of that, I feel like a little communication might be appreciated by our community.
Okay, we'll make that change to November 3rd to start that, the beginning of November.
Again, and that's, and that's where I think being, starting at the, at the beginning of the, of November also allows for, for, for our families from a budgeting purpose to be able to know that starting at the next month, that's when, that's when it'll go into effect.
Yeah, thank you for catching that. Any other questions on 8.2? So 8.3 is informational. It's in September, we presented the calendar that would fall under the Act One Resolution, where we would pass a resolution and state that the budget will come in under the Act One Index of 3.5%. There were a couple of questions on whether we will have a exception, any exception dollars available. We, our current estimate is we will have a very small amount of exception dollars available. So we wanted to show what the calendar would look like if we didn't take the Act One Resolution and we went back to our normal approving a proposed preliminary and preliminary budget. So this is that calendar that we've seen before, obviously. The key date here again is the primary election, which in 2026 is May 19. And then you back up from there and that shows you when, so February 18th, 90 days prior to that primary election is when the board would have to adopt a proposed preliminary, or no, the preliminary budget, not the proposed preliminary, that's the preliminary date. So that February 18th date is actually the February board meeting. So technically we could do it at the board meeting, but that would make me way too nervous. So I backed it up to the May 9th work session, which is typically what we do in February. Obviously, if there's a snow day, then we're, we, we're going to have issues if we don't have a budget passed. So then backing up prior to that, we would present and ask for approval of the proposed preliminary in, at the January work session. After the preliminary budget, everything else is the same. We would still do the budget book in April, the budget hearing, the first Monday of May, and then the proposed final and final budgets in May and June. And again, no matter what path we take, because of the 30 days between the final and proposed final, we have to approve the proposed final at the May work session so that we have 30 days between then and the June 15th board meeting. So as we think about going forward, we will have a little bit more information in November. If, if you would ask for a recommendation on which path we should take, we'll have the audit report will be wrapped up by then. We'll start to gather information for the budget in November. Really, that information starts coming in December. A resolution or a proposed preliminary, we'd be okay waiting till January. That January 29th date is the date that we would have to approve a Act One Resolution. So that, that could wait technically until January. So again, as we think about the best option for the 26, 27 budget and moving forward, January is really the key month.
Does it remain the preference of the administration that we operate as we did last year with the Act One Resolution? As we sit here with the information we have available today, subject to what? I know it's could change depending on the information flows, but as we sit here today, is that still a pathway that the administration feels comfortable with?
Yes, it is.
The Act One Index is 3.5%, so we would feel comfortable with it. The exception dollars that are available will be really small too. One positive of the exception, when you think about the, the two county system, sometimes depending on the split, which again, we'll, we'll find out more information in, in the coming weeks and months. To get even to that 3.5, sometimes you use exception dollars because of the way the split works. Why are our special ed dollars limited? It seems our, our budget is going up every year. That amount is going up. And why isn't the allocation for budgetary relief going up similarly? So it's only the amount that goes up above the index? So the, and this is comparing 2324 to 2425, the two most recent fully completed years. And the increase in that year was slightly over the Act One Index for total special ed expenditures. And do those special ed expenditures include elements of our settlement agreements? Yes, but that's a relatively small portion of those total special ed work, you know, close to 18, 19 million of the settlement is a small sliver of those, that total expenditures. Most of it's salary and benefits for our special ed staff.
I'm sorry, I got to revisit the Act One because that's still my preferred pathway for us. And at the last cycle of meetings, you know, I, I posed the rhetorical question about when we would actually do that. And I thought about it in terms of the upcoming election. But does administration now have a, a view about when in this timeframe you would prefer to see the Act One Resolution? If that is the path that we follow, when that would be presented and voted on at the board, knowing that December is an organizational meeting? So it effectively, at this point in the calendar, limits us to November or January to do that business.
So if, if that's, if the board is comfortable going the Act One Resolution, we could bring it forward in, in November. There really isn't, it isn't going to change much between now and January.
Thank you.
And we would be comfortable doing that if that's what the board feels comfortable with. So if there's no other questions on 8.3, we'll move to 8.4, which is the monthly local revenue analysis. Just to highlight a couple of things here, the real estate tax collection has picked up. Last year we were down really, it was a reflection of some decreases in total assessment. But the real estate tax collection number is strong for this year. I do want to highlight one that looks like it's really low, the interim tax collection. Interim tax collection is based off of notices that we receive from Chester and Delaware County on interim tax notifications, which are basically notices either saying that a new property is now taxable or an improvement to an existing property has been completed. The, we're basically, you, you bill and then you collect over the next three months. So the first three months of this fiscal year are really low. But that's because the last three months of last fiscal year, the bills were, the notification from the county were really low. If you look at what we've billed the last three months, we're at, including October, we're at about 140,000 in bills issued. So we've picked up again, and I would assume that that number will come somewhere close to budget or close to where we were last year. Other than that, everything looks on target. The interest income remains strong. The interest income remains strong, um, although, uh, there has been a slight decrease to the rates that we, we are receiving. The rates still remain strong even on our liquid fund. So, uh, I don't think that 1.3 million will be, um, we, we will have no issue really exceeding that 1.3 million by the end of the fiscal year. So that remains, uh, a very strong collections. Any questions on local revenue? Back to you, Mr. Schwartz.
If there are no questions from my colleagues, I'll turn it back to Dr. Barata.
Thank you, Mr. Schartz. Moving on to curriculum instruction and technology with Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. Earlier today, uh, we met for the October curriculum instruction and technology meeting. I'm going to invite Dr. Jenkins up to give the report and I will share what, once again, there was valuable detailed information presented and interesting discussion ensued.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So the first item is a Spanish exchange program. And this we will be asking the board to vote on. It's, well, a similar opportunity to the French and German exchange program. Because the trips that the Spanish department has planned have not taken off. So they thought, after speaking with the kids, let's go the avenue that seems to be working in our world language department, which is the exchange program. So that's why they're proposing, um, an exchange program. So we will be asking for the board vote on this. It would take place. Our students going to, um, Spain in 2026. And then the Spanish students coming to Unionville the summer of 2027. Any questions?
I, I would just add that, um, you, you mentioned this would be a valuable offer, uh, offering, uh, similar to what the French and German programs do, that Spanish hasn't done in a while. And it's a different type of opportunity, educational opportunity for the kids.
That is correct.
In, in, I think a positive way. Um, I just wanted to, um, add that I think, uh, based on the conversation we had earlier, that, uh, perhaps in a, a little bit of time, you may circle back to share with the board, how those three different language programs can sort of have a similar model as we go forward.
Yes, that is correct. We're gonna, um, reconvene, um, the world language, uh, leaders of the exchange programs. So I'm going to speak to Ms. Paris, um, Ms. Shaw, um, uh, Ms. Lisca and Ms. Pissaro is the department chair. And we're kind of gonna draw some similarities and make sure we have, you know, the same expectations for our students, no matter what program they're in. And the families that host our parents, and then we'll have more information on that. So.
Do we have any concerns about cannibalization of participation between the different programs? And then in addition to these programs, the foreign language programs, we have an art, uh, trip that I think is scheduled for this upcoming year. International Club, uh, taking their trips. As a parent who participates in some of these programs, like there's only so much bandwidth that I have for, for it. And I just don't want each of the programs to collapse to a de minimis size that, because I think there's actual synergy in having a good number of participants in the program. And having a, a good contingent going, I'd rather not see six or eight kids going to this program simply because we have too many offerings.
Yes. And so they are looking at a minimum of 15 students was what their hope and their goal is. Um, and I do agree with you, we do have a ton of offerings for our students. Uh, and I think that's part of them taking a step back as a department to say, why haven't our trips run? And what are we doing? And what are the trips that are running? And looking at that, and I think what they were really looking for too, is the cultural immersion piece for students, um, in the Spanish program, similar to French and the German students. And that, you know, it's different to go on a trip and be in a country, but you get a different experience when you're living with the host family and experiencing that. You know, the culture side of it. So I think, but I do hear you and I do understand with international travel and art club as well.
I would also say, Mr. Schatz, I think part of the reason that the Spanish teachers are looking at an exchange program instead of an international trip is exactly, uh, what you mentioned. Um, a lot of times it may be the same pool of kids who are interested in multiple trips. And we recognize there's a big dollar sign next to them and you can't necessarily go on everything. So, uh, I commend the teachers for being persistent and trying to find something that's going to stick and click. But as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, we're also going to look to kind of bring all of the teacher leaders together and just make sure we're all pulling in the same direction because it's such great opportunities for kids. But we want to make sure that they're all as successful as we want them to be.
Yeah, uh, that was at the heart of my question, which is let's make sure we're synchronizing between the different offerings to maximize participation in all of them.
Thank you. Any other questions about the Spanish exchange? Uh, the next item was an informational item about lab aids, which is the math, or I'm sorry, the science curriculum that we purchased for sixth, seventh and eighth at the middle school. It follows steel standards, the students, it's hands-on, it's active. But we do realize that there was a lot of money and time invested in this program, so we wanted to provide an update. Um, so Ms. Salisbury talked about the implementation and was able to show some pictures of some students with the hands-on material. And, and talked about the difference of students solving problems and becoming thinkers and problem solving. And it's interesting, um, one of the, you know, they're posed with a question and that phenomenon of thinking of, now how can we solve this and what can we do and kind of bringing it back to the students to, for them to make decisions for them to think. So we will continue to provide updates, but that's our, uh, lab aids.
And I would just encourage my board colleagues as well as anyone, uh, interested in this to, um, check out the discussion in the, the presentation, the work session, uh, because Ms. Salisbury, uh, really, uh, brought pictures, explained it, and it was very inspiring. And I think the students are inspired and the teachers are also inspired. So it just seemed like a win-win.
Yeah, you can definitely feel the excitement when she was talking about the program. Uh, the next item, we will be asking for a vote in November. It's our AP English novel, um, for the 12th grade AP college board course. So, um, what they're looking to do is take 11 new novels and incorporate them into the AP curriculum program. So Ms. Ahart was able to provide, um, if you look at the layout of college board and the, and the enhancements of the program that they've done, we're now looking to incorporate some of the novels that they're recommending. Um, and it was very interesting to listen to her talk right here. If you look at the expansion of 2024 from, in the AP courses, and what they're looking to do is substitute in some of additional novels. Some are brand new, like James, um, that was a 2024 novel. And some are, I believe she said 1993 was the holder rub. Um, so there, it's novels from all over, but they're looking to say, hey, what can we do in the curriculum? How can we increase this and how can we bring more literature in with our students? So these are the 11 novels, they are all up and presented and are available for community read for the next month. And then we will be asking for a vote on this in November. Are any questions? And again, Ms. Ahart did a phenomenal job at working with.
I was just going to add, Ms. Ahart did a phenomenal job and hats off to Ms. Holgkin, who has done a lot of the legwork on this and to my colleagues and to the public. Um, it became apparent that this, uh, this 12th grade AP English literature course has, is, the kids have done extremely well over the years. And this is, I think, their first opportunity where they have a little breathing room from college board to expand. And they, they've really dug in and it, it looks like that it's going to be good work.
Yes. Are there any questions? And then the last item that we talked about was just, um, curriculum cycle update and where we are. So social studies, um, FCS, which is family and consumer science. And art are in year one, so we've had the kickoff meetings, we're identifying needs, looking at some research. We will be meeting again in January to discuss next steps. Year two, um, ELA, we're meeting, uh, next week, October, maybe two weeks, October 28th. What ELA, small group to discuss what do we need for that four or five piece? And we know that we have the phonics and phonological awareness now in K through three. So looking at a writing and comprehension piece to go along with that, um, how we support that. Technology and tech ed, um, they are doing some great work. They are going to visit some schools and look at some updated courses and see what they can bring back. Business apps will be presenting at curriculum. Um, I believe it's four new courses that they have, and we're really excited about the possibility of three new AP courses in that field and then a cooperative ed course. So I think there's great things coming out of the business ed and we'll get some more of that at curriculum council. And then we'll hopefully have it to, um, the board for approval, um, probably January, February. Some maybe actually, I'm thinking now, it'll be January, so that can go on the course catalog. So some, for some students to request for next year. And science, we are, uh, meeting as a steals group for K to five to really push down their standards, just like we did for lab aids in the middle school. And the high school is now working on the steel standards, what can we do, um, in the K to five setting? And just so everyone is aware, uh, Keystone and any testing that'll be done in December or January will be the last time that it'll be the old standards in biology. And they will sunset and then comes spring will be the new steel standards for all PSSA and Keystone testing. So that will sunset the old standards in, um, December, January. Any questions on curriculum cycle? Lots of fun stuff going on.
Um, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Uh, also curriculum council will meet next week for the first meeting of the year. And that's the body of stakeholders that advises on curriculum as well. And, uh, we had no, uh, technology update for this month, but Mr. Webb and his team continue to do their excellent work supporting our district. No questions, back to you, Dr. Brata.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Moving on to personnel with Dr. Simonson.
Thank you. At the beginning of this meeting, Dr. Barata outlined, uh, some of the discussion topics that occurred during our executive session and many of those overlapped with our personnel agenda items. Just a couple of things to highlight on our routine, uh, agenda items. Uh, we have one contract to vote on next week, uh, with school operations services. We currently use that group to provide custodial services and we're expanding that to include, um, uh, the ability to tap in for substitute cafeteria workers if, if we need to. It's an at-cost contract, uh, that we use as needed. If we don't use it, we don't pay. And, uh, the other thing I was going to ask, uh, Mr. Audvar to, uh, describe as agenda item 10.5, uh, items one, two, and three, and kind of a, a clever way, we're meeting the needs of our, uh, IT, uh, uh, program.
Thank you, Dr. Simonson. Yes, so there's no doubt that, uh, the role of data management and, and the way that we work with all of our many systems is becoming increasingly complex and increasingly, uh, necessary, both in terms of managing our data and of course managing the security of the data that we have for our students, for our staff, for all of our community members. Uh, so last month, uh, the board approved a supplemental for a, uh, tech position at Pecopsin Elementary School to meet the needs of, um, kind of hard and software tech support at Pecopsin. Uh, that's very well in line with the other three elementary schools. So one of the recommendations for this month is a collection of recommendations, a reclassification, a creation and an elimination of a position, uh, all within our technology department. So the recommendation is going to be to eliminate the position, uh, the technology support position that had previously been at, uh, Pecopsin Elementary School, to reclassify, uh, a current position of data assistant to information systems assistant, which more accurately represents what that role covers. And to create a new position of information systems specialist. Uh, someone who can be added to that district level team to support all of our many systems and all the data that we manage on a given day, uh, in Unionville, Chad's Ford. So really it's a creative way of re, uh, restructuring our technology department and our information systems department to make sure that we're staying current with the needs in this, uh, very critical area. Uh, and doing so in a efficient and fiscally responsible way. So, uh, we look forward, this will be a voting item next week, but we look forward and we really feel this is, uh, major opportunity to improve the systems that we have in place, um, for our whole district.
Thanks for going over that. I just wanted, uh, Mr. Audvar to describe that because it's just another example of how we're taking, uh, uh, needs that we have in the district being, uh, uh, creative and clever and how we are, um, doing that and trying to be as, uh, uh, cost-conscious as possible. And I think, uh, it's, uh, quite successful.
Absolutely, Dr. Simonson. I just have to be remiss if I didn't give Mr. Webb and Mrs. Dorazio, our director of technology and supervisor of information systems, a shout out for coming forward with creative solutions and figuring out how they can best allocate their people to meet the needs of everyone in our district. So kudos to them.
Good point.
Uh, I'll, I'll withdraw my question if this is not a publicly appropriate, uh, question. Uh, so I'll ask and then I'll pause. The net budgetary impact, if we approve all of these decisions, is how much?
The net budgetary impact would be anticipated to be about $27,000.
And, and is that effective for the balance of this school year or is that the annualized, uh, impact?
That would be the annualized impact. So we'd see a shorter amount for that for this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that, uh, topic? Or any of the other, uh, personnel items? If not, Dr. Brata, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Simonson. Uh, moving on to safe schools with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Brata. This time I'd like to, um, ask Dr. Hoffman to present the October Safe Schools Report.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Allen. And, um, first of all, thank you to, uh, the board and administration for, um, and one of our district values is being a people-centered culture. And one of the main reasons I love working here is the fact that we are, um, we're a family and our community is our family. And the opportunity to go see my daughter tonight at, uh, her senior night, something that we've shared together since kindergarten. Um, it's really important, uh, for me to be there. And so I, I appreciate everybody and everything that everybody did to make sure that I was able to have that experience. And I, I think it speaks volumes to about our district and why people want to be here. Um, so I just wanted to start with that. Um, so thank you. Uh, second, I think that's talking about the Safe Schools Committee, uh, here report. So if we go to the next, uh, slide, please. Uh, just some past events from September regarding safety. Uh, we did, I mentioned this at our last meeting, there was an upcoming training regarding swatting and bomb threats. Uh, that was a fantastic training, uh, put on by the, the Boston FBI. Um, and it is something unfortunately that we're seeing more and more of across the country and even in our local area. Um, but these, this is a list here of some things that we were able to do. Uh, a group of us, Mr. Whitesall and Mr. Al, Mr. Allen and I also went to, uh, the Safe School Summit, which was a really great opportunity to meet others across the, uh, about the Commonwealth that are like-minded in their safety, uh, and quest for continuing to always become more safe. And finally, um, this wasn't a, a planned event, but, uh, September 30th, we had, um, uh, communicated about an incident at the middle school to our public. And, um, we were able to debrief that, that situation internally as, as a group of admin, uh, and share with, with our, with our school board. So I think it's important that, um, when events like that happen, that we communicate those clearly and transparently. And also that we take a moment to learn, to figure out what we've learned in our, in a real life opportunity. So, um, if we go to the next slide here, uh, there's some more events upcoming in October. So in case you're wondering whether or not safety is on our mind all the time, there's plenty to list each month about what we're doing. So a couple of big things here to highlight, our personal electronic device task force, we had, we had our first meeting, it was fantastic. Uh, we learned some things, uh, regarding, you know, how our new policy is working, how it's being implemented. And, uh, really got some great feedback from our teachers and from our students. We had some students that were with us and they were, they were like the, they were the star of the show. Um, everybody wanted them at their table to be able to, to share more about what's happening, what's going on. Really learned some, uh, really awesome things. We learned that, um, our, it's, things are going great at our elementary level. Um, that, uh, our, our parents and students and teachers are doing a great job of working with the, the new policy and especially on transportation, uh, the not have devices on transportation. At the middle school, um, the bell-to-bell policy is, is, is being enforced. Um, and we had a couple of middle school students who definitely let us know it was being enforced. And, um, had some really great insights though about, uh, some before-school time and things they were considering. We did talk about pain points, like what are the, the pain points from everybody's perspective? The middle school pain point at this point seems to be the, the time before the morning bell. And whether or not you can come into school with, with a device or your, or your, uh, music playing or whether or not, um, it should be off by when you walk in the door versus when the bell rings. So there's a little bit of discussion going on there. Students are trying to negotiate with us a little bit there, so we're, we're listening. Um, and, uh, secondly, uh, at the high school level, things are really going well, um, also. And I think the only pain point we're seeing at the high school right now is the study halls. And similarly, some, some lobbying and negotiating around the study hall time. But the thing that I feel like is the most important thing about what we heard from this task force meeting, from the students, from everybody involved. from the students, from everybody involved, is that everybody understands why we're doing it. Even even if the students were frustrated about it, sometimes they understood why. And I think to get to that level of, I guess, self-actualization and understanding, that's huge. And we'd learned some strategies that our students are using called like phone stacks. I don't know if you ever heard of that before. They'll, they'll be talking, but if they want everybody to be off their phones, they'd say phone stack. And they all stack up their phones on the table. So that was, that was interesting to hear about. So we talked about, you know, lunch and learn. Why aren't kids on their phones at lunch and learn? But other times they might want to be. They shared that in person, face-to-face, they love, they love that interaction. They actually crave that interaction. And when they're on their phone, they get frustrated with people that are on their phone when they have the opportunity to be face-to-face. And this was middle school and high school, right? So I think we learned a great deal. I think we learned that our, the enforcement of our policy has been strong. The expectation setting at the beginning of the year was strong. We have a couple of areas to work through as I noted. But overall, when you, when you can get everybody on the same page of understanding why there needs to be some restriction, why there needs to be some, when we talk about our portrait of a graduate, what do we want them to be able to do when they leave here? Know that this is a good tool, but know that this is also a distraction and when to use it and when not to use it. And if our kids can walk away with that, that's, that's a gift. And we, so we were really excited about Michael, Mr. Audibard led a great committee meeting there. I was really excited about that. So I wanted to highlight that in particular.
Dr. Hoffman, before we leave that, just something to share, I ran into an old friend Friday night, Dr. Bachelor at Radnor. And he was very excited to tell me that Radnor High School this year went phone-free throughout the school day, including lunch, including study hall. And the pals, they don't turn the phones in, but they have to be out of sight, off and out of sight all day. And he said, it's working really well. They're pleased. There's a little fine tuning. So that might be a good principal to talk to. Interestingly, one of the fine-tuned things that he talked about was there may be some times when you need to call home about a medical appointment or something. They're actually thinking about putting in some old-fashioned phone booths, like we used to have for the payphones. And if there is a special situation where it is appropriate to use the phone, you go to the phone booth, pull out your phone, and you're not distracting anyone else. So they might be some good, a good school district, a good high school to collaborate with. They went almost cold turkey and the reports are very favorable.
Now, that's very helpful, Mr. Hallrung. Those are the exact kinds of things that as a task force, we're going to be looking at. Like, one of the overarching themes from the conversation was people are acknowledging it's different this year and it's really making a difference, which is so exciting to hear. Anytime a new policy goes into place, you recognize it may take a little time, but people are acknowledging the difference. So now it's looking at the specific pain points and then what can we do? Or the specific areas where maybe phones pop up unexpectedly or they're occasionally suggested as a need and like, all right, how can we get around that? So we'll definitely shout out to Radnor and continue that collaboration. But thank you so much for that.
Okay, that was spirited. Okay, great. The, also, we have a couple of trainings this month that we'll be, that we'll be going to. And also similarly exciting, but we haven't had the meeting yet, is the Student Code of Conduct Committee meeting, where we'll take a look at our policy 218. And actually, if we go to the next slide, I think, actually, after this one, I'll go, stay here for a second and I'll come back to that. This is just our annual timeline, where we are with things, what we've completed. Just want to highlight one thing in talking with our first responders and some transition between some positions at the, at the 911 Center. We are going to be having reunification discussions at each of our meetings. But the exercise with the first responders has been moved from the November timeframe to the April timeframe. So I wanted to highlight that, I'm sorry, from the October timeframe. So I wanted to highlight that there for the group to, you're aware that that aspect is still on the timeline, just moved a little later. Then we're going to continue every, every meeting that we have with our District Safety Council. We're going to hit reunification in some way, shape, or form and some sort of discussion about that. Now, Jody, did you, did you have anything there? Okay. All right, great. If we go to the next slide, this is where I'll talk a little bit more about the Code of Conduct Committee. And so the three bullet points here are really the focus of the committee. And this is a great time to do this, by the way, because one, it's a good time. It's always good to study your policies and what you do and how you do it. But because we have so many new people implementing those policies, it's also an excellent time to do that as well. Because it gives us not only an opportunity to, to make sure we're all on the same page. We can, we can norm and level set, make sure everybody's understanding of the policies, provide some scenarios where, where, how, how would we react or respond given scenarios? But in general, this is what we want to do. We want to review our current and three-year discipline data. So take a look at the discipline data over the past three years. What's it telling us? What's it showing us? Review our current code of conduct policy. Are we aligned to best practice? What does best practice say currently? And how do we compare to other districts? And then finally, make some recommendations for adjustments based on those conversations. So really important to hear from our principals in this, in this discussion, from our, from our parents and our teachers and and our students to see how this is going, what trends are we seeing? Have we reversed any trends with some of our changes? And what do we want to do going forward? Are there some ideas that other districts have that maybe we could steal or implement that are more aligned to best practices? So not suggesting that our policy isn't best practice, but I think it's important to take a look and see what's out there and see how it meets our needs as a community. So that is the focus of the committee, and we're looking forward to reviewing data first and getting some feedback from, from our committee about how things are going and why the data may potentially be the way it is and move forward with what we might want to do going forward.
I would suggest on that one that we don't forget to ask, it's not just are we aligned to best, what are thought to be best practices or how does it compare to other districts? But how does it compare to our values and standards? You know, how does it align with what we believe about students and about shaping behavior and about how discipline should run and how we can get best, you know, respectful behavior in the best way? Not just what other districts are doing, but what we believe about our students and about ourselves.
Completely agree, completely agree. And I think our current policy actually has some very unique things to our district as it is, I think, right? So definitely is it aligned to what we're trying to accomplish? We mentioned with the personal electronic devices, our portrait of a graduate, and what we want our kids to be able to do when they leave. It's important that that kids also know that they learn from experiences. Any point of discipline is to teach a lesson or to learn from. It's not about punishment, really is about, you know, learning a lesson and reflection and moving on. So with with new learning to make yourself better. So that is, I do appreciate that, Mr. Hallrung. That is something that we want to make sure that we're, that we're doing with our review and make sure that's uniquely situated to our vision and our mission as a district.
I was just looking up quickly the, our values, and we have the superior school experience. And the first line is safe, secure, and comfortable campus environment. So that's something to keep foremost.
Absolutely. Almost of the mission, it sounds like the mission statement for this committee or the Safe Schools Committee. So, and I believe with that, that concludes our safety report for the month, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Seeing no other questions or comments from my colleagues, back to you, Dr. Brata.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We're going to move on. We're going to move on to reports and comments. We'll have our superintendent's report. I was going to say that Dr. Hoffman sneaked in, but he squeaked in with his very wet shoes from senior night. You need galoshes. Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Brata. Yes, my feet are freezing underneath of this little carpet here or this little curtain. But I did want to take the opportunity to share with the public and our community and the board just a quick update about where we are with the the middle school project. Because it's been a little bit of time since we communicated about it. I think it'd be important. So currently, we're working with Breslin in the development of a schematic design for a new middle school. As you already know, the contract with Breslin was, to complete the design work was approved in June. Since mid-August, the district has been working with Breslin to develop a design for a new middle school that meets the educational needs of our staff and students. So between September and November, we are collecting feedback from the numerous stakeholders that will utilize the middle school to help continue this design process. So on September 8th and 15th, Breslin and administration met with middle school teachers to view an initial concept of the design and get their feedback based on their individual needs. And now on Sept, on October 2nd, we held an informational session with the board to show design concept after incorporating teacher feedback. We're now beginning the process of requesting feedback from a number of different stakeholder groups to further refine the discussion. So as been in our district practice for a long time, we run a lot of our information through our committees. We have a lot of committees. We do committee work really well, as Mr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson always says. So we want to take the opportunity to take design through our committees so that they, each in this committee can run their individual lens through the design process. So for example, on October 21st, we have Curriculum Council. So we'll do a presentation at Curriculum Council with the lens of curriculum and teaching and learning. How does it look at the design? How does this, through that lens, what do you see? What do you notice? What do you wonder? On the 22nd, we have our Safety Council, another important lens to look at the design of the building through our safety. Athletic Directors and Student Activities on the 23rd. You know, how does this inform any of our extracurricular activities? PTO Advisory Council, that's going to be an opportunity for some of our parents to see, thinking about the, how do we use the building? And our Wellness Council, for yet another lens. And I use the analogy at times, sometimes, but I think when you go to the eye doctor and you're trying to figure out your prescription and you drop one lens and it gets a little clearer and you drop another lens, gets a little clearer, and you drop a third lens and eventually it's clear because you put a lot of lenses on it. It's really been kind of the hallmark of our district is to to run a lot of our big initiatives through a lot of committees and get a lot of lenses on it to get a clearer picture of what we're trying to do. So these groups that I mentioned are comprised of various stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, admin, and board members. And all the feedback collected will help inform an initial draft. So Breslin will provide a cost estimate for the draft that's created in December based on the design. In January, the current plan is to present the schematic design to the public along with estimated costs and button project budget, including debt service options. So stay tuned as we continue through the process. We'll add this to the timeline to the middle school project page on the website so folks can see the upcoming work over the next three months. But just wanted to provide an update on where we're headed, where we're going, where we've been for the community because it's been a little bit since we've given anybody an update overall. So bottom line, design phase, getting feedback. Once the design's complete, we'll get an estimate. January, we'll present and talk about budget and and options. So with that, Dr. Brata, that concludes the superintendent's report for me this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Thanks for that update. Moving on, it's time for community comments. If anyone in our community would like to make public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to school director comments, beginning with Mr. Hallrung.
No comments.
No comments.
I have no comments.
No comments. No comment.
No comment.
I have a comment. Thank you, Dr. Ryder. An appreciation for all of your hard work and effort on behalf of our students and our district through the years. And I want to personally wish you all the success in your new role. I know you're going to be fantastic there and and we look forward to hearing back about the accomplishments in your future.
Absolutely. Same. I just want to announce that our regular school board meeting will be on Tuesday, October 21st at Unionville Elementary School. And I want to thank everyone for their time and attention, and tonight's meeting is adjourned.